Father, thank you for bringing this speech to my listening. Thank you for the group of students that we have with us aside. Thank you for all the conversations I have been, I know you blessed them with it. Please watch over us as we all travel in our community. Jesus, holy Father.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Roll Call, Randy Rance.
Here.
Beau Gordon.
Here.
Linda Ballard.
Here.
Barry Glass.
Here.
Maria Bass.
Here.
Gary Castle.
Here.
Johnny Fountain.
Here.
Johnny, do the financial committee report?
Okay, all the checks checked out. Motor vehicles caught up with on the checks. So, we still are, so that made us catch up ninety-one thousand dollars on the taxes, but we're still less than what we were last year by eighty-one thousand.
The finance committee met this past week and tossed around, had a very productive meeting. We tossed around a lot of things and discussed a lot of things on several different points. And that's what we're going to continue to do. We're going to try to start meeting during this coming month after this meeting. We intend to meet every week, once every week between now and our next meeting and get some proposals together, bring to this board and to the people. And hopefully everything, we're going to hopefully get together two or three different proposals that we'll be able to look at, talk about, and go over and hopefully agree on. The, it's continuing, it's just a continual process that we're going through and hopefully by this time next month, we'll have something that will be part of it. So I need somebody to go ahead and approve the finance committee.
I'm very excited for the meeting.
One second.
Now, favor. Now, we're moving to Employee of the Month, I mean Label Employee of the Month is Cassidy Baum. And Scott Walker.
Cassidy, employee of the month.
Good evening, thank y'all for having me here again tonight. It's always a pleasure to join with you and recognizing the Employee of the Month this month is Miss Cassidy Baum. Cassidy is a professional at Grayson Elementary. Her colleagues say she loves her students deeply and shows up every single day with a passion for teaching them new things. Her hard work doesn't go unnoticed. She pours her heart into her school and her students. But what really sets Cassidy apart is her spirit. She's always offering a helping hand, lifting others up, and spreading positivity wherever she goes. Whether it's supporting a coworker or encouraging us to, Cassidy makes a difference. Thank you Cassidy for being such a bright light in our school. We are so lucky to have you. Please throw me in congratulating Miss Cassidy Baum.
They didn't change, you had to have a speech?
They did. I'm very grateful, actually. I do love these kids. When I first started, I'm not even alive, I was very nervous. I went home the first day, crammed in my car. But as the time went on, I've always had a passion for these kids, but by the time, by the end of the year, like, these are my babies. So I don't like to miss work because I would like to.
Cassidy, you asked Nick for a raise because you're probably one of few people that come in at wheel safety. I asked her if she wanted to say anything, she said no. She got pressured to answer. She ain't very good.
Next on the agenda, we recognize the Caldwell Parish High School Powerlifting Team. I believe everybody in this room knows what they did. Just for the sake of those that might not know, they placed runner duck state champions in powerlifting, and that's remarkable. It's a congratulations, young men. It's fantastic. So y'all can stand up. Matter of fact, Nick, you and the president take a picture with us.
Yeah, can we get Coach Crane to talk about it a little bit? Yeah, and then I would love to.
Yeah.
Coach, gotta go down.
And honestly, you might have to sit down so that you can get coached. So, yeah, there we go. Then we'll stand up and talk again.
Good evening, everybody. Thank y'all for having us. I just wanted to talk about these young men very quickly and just to kind of tell you how our season went. So when we started, we didn't know, you know, how the season, what direction we were going in, but I know, or I knew with the raw talent that we'd have a shot at doing something great. But when we started, we started as individuals, and I knew we had to grow into something more than that. As the season progressed, I saw them grow into something, and that is a team. And along the way, we did, we got better, we got stronger, we broke some records at regionals, broke some records at state, and then, you know, at the end of state, we did fortunately get state runner-up. And, you know, we went and looked back, and that was the first time that that has happened in Caldwell Parish since 2003. But I think the best thing that we got this season, better than the trophy, is that we grew together as a family. The trophy was nice, but I think to watch these kids grow up and grow into a team, I think that was far more great than any trophy you could get. So I just wanted to say to y'all and to everybody else how proud I am of these young men, and that all their, you know, hard work and dedication has paid off, and hopefully next year, we'll make another run for it and try to come home with a big one.
And I see ladies in the back, too. Yeah, girls, that's why don't you introduce?
I didn't forget about girls. Yeah, one of our girls here, Angela Bratton, she's a senior. The girls, like, also, it was the same thing. It was new. I mean, we had three or four girls, I think, last year, and then boom, we have eleven going to the regionals. Okay? And we're going to continue to grow the girls. The girls, they work hard, and actually, they complain less than the boys. I also am proud of our girls and their efforts as well, too. And I just wanted to thank y'all for having us.
Can you introduce each one?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. All right, come on, stand up. We got Andrew McKee, he was in the 242-pound weight class. He got third place. We got senior VJ Austin, he got second in the 275. Got Jay Dushan freshman, he got fourth place in the 132s. Caden Mann Jr., third place in the 181s. We had Sweat, he came and helped us as a manager, and we'll get him qualified next year. We have Austin Worley, first place, and he was actually one of the ones that broke the deadlift and the total record as the super heavyweight class. And then we have Jet Roberts freshman, he got fourth place in the 114s. So that's all of our guys. I'm sorry. And we got Greg Dushan. Right? I don't know where I got. I think he got eighth place. Well, I'm sorry. We're in a straight line. And then we got Wadman, I think he eighth place, right, in the 114-pound weight class. And we got Angela Bratton, I already mentioned her, I want you to stand up, Angela. She got fourth place in the one, we won't say the weight class.
Choose one of them and let them tell us how they feel about it.
Um, I think we got one senior, so I think I would like everyone to stand up.
Well, just speak on behalf of the group, because we always hear from the adults, I'd like to hear from you guys.
You stand up, you stand up. So far, this year has been, I play football, it's like, feel good to come to powerlifting, see us all get better, accomplish something, maybe do ourselves, make another trophy victory for our parish.
Wait, wait, VJ, I'll help you out. What's your fondest or most joyous memory throughout the whole season? I'm doing this stuff about you, man. So I'd like to ask Worley, how much did you deadlift? Say that again? He didn't say two fifteen. So you reached down on, whoever didn't strike a finger, so everybody can understand. So everybody can understand what a deadlift looks like. So there's six hundred and fifteen pounds on a bar down there, and what do you do, Worley? You stand, you lock it out, right? Stick your chest out, there you are. And you put it down when? When you're down.
When they say so.
When they say so. Okay, good. Good job, Worley. Now, Bratton back there in the back, Bratton, as a female, what was your fondest memory out there that can be self-proclaimed?
Probably getting to help the girls that have never done it before.
Awesome.
And help them grow as people.
Anybody else want to comment? Somebody may not as shy as VJ.
VJ was good.
You did good, VJ.
I just want to say, I went on Thursday to stay with them at the hotel while the girls lifted. And we let the boys play their Playstation, just chill out. And I want to tell y'all, I didn't have not one problem. I told them ahead of time, I'm going to be in my room, I'm not staying in this stinking room with y'all. Y'all going to play games. You can be arrested if you get in trouble, but I'm, and I went back and forth, but we had, we had a good time. Had a good time, no problem, none.
And darling, that's the reason why I want you guys to speak, because we always hear about the negative.
Right.
We never hear about what a kid is doing in the positive. So for you guys to come here, and if their parent's not here, hopefully they can go back and look at some of the positive things, because all you see on Facebook is the negative, the negative, the negative. So when we have something and we need to shine, that's when we need to hear from you guys to make sure that we are aware that, hey, we are doing something else other than what we see from the negative side. So, Mr. President, I would like to offer unanimous resolution commending the football with weightlifting culture. Along with it, Kaylee, you can use AI and put it out on your. But you guys deserve that.
Hey, I got one more question. You know, I like this kind of stuff when it's happening. How many of you guys perform your personal best at state championships? Two, three people beat your personal best, but that's great. See, your personal best happens, you lived all year long, and you've lived in that state championship, you're doing your personal best, that says a lot about you, but that's awesome. Great job as a team.
You know what another thing is? How many parents went to school at Caldwell Parish? How many grandparents went to school at Caldwell Parish? How much school did your grand? How many great-grandparents from sixty-three, if y'all even know, did they go? Y'all make a lot. Y'all are Caldwell Parish proud.
Coach, while you're here, do it on ask for that raise.
Coach Crane's right.
Well, just to add, it doesn't matter, boys or girls, this powerlifting team, I mean, they are some good kids, and I would go to bat for them any day. And to see, like I said, to see them grow as people is the best part. The trophy was great, it was nice, it was fun to bring all new stuff, all that, but to watch these kids mature as young adults is the best thing that I've seen. And we want to continue this powerlifting program because it's bigger than all of us, and that's what we're going to do.
Were you on TV that night?
Uh, yeah.
Two different stations.
Y'all eat pizza or something?
Yeah.
We get lots of good press for us.
Did Aaron Deter bring enough pizza for you?
Barely. But I just want to thank y'all.
You don't want to take that? You want to take the picture? Where do you want to take it?
Inside.
Like, do you want to do it right here?
Again?
Yeah. You're not going to stand right here?
Maybe they'll cover stuff.
You'd like me in the center. Girl in the middle.
Why ask him to, Aaron? You had to bring him enough pizza.
Okay. Hold on. Okay. All right, y'all, I got you all. All right, ready? One, two, three, go. Got it. I got it. Y'all, congrats. Nellin, you did it? Come on, girl. Powerlift, girl. Powerlift was right. Good job. Congratulations. Come on. Come on. No, no, no.
So I did want to say something real quick. We had, I've never dealt with powerlifting, didn't know anything about it until Jay started and was all about it. But we had a meet in January, and I was super impressed with how smooth everything went. But I did, I also felt proud, Coach Barton, both your boys were there in the middle of baseball season, and we were there till late. They stayed there, the all of it, the cleanup, and then I'm not sure the other coach's name.
Was it Ham? Was it Coach Ham?
The one that was in the weight room earlier.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, and he, like, they didn't have to. They were, and all the parents that had cooked all the stuff for the events and people and everything, it was just, it does feel good when you're from here and you see all the community people pulling in to heal. And he's just been awesome for all these kids.
You can say that.
Yeah.
Item A, we're adopting a resolution commending Martha Lu Simon for her dedicated service to Caldwell Parish schools. I would like to just say one thing before.
You're good. Anybody who wants to talk?
I moved here thirty-six years ago, and my first Sunday, I met Martha Lu Simon. And I knew the first meeting that she was a person that was a person to be reckoned with. And I've always had a great deal of respect for her. Everything that she did, and all the things that she did as far as the children in this parish, in the school system, not just in this school system, but the parish itself. The love and the dedication that she expressed and put out, and all the work that she did in this parish is just almost unheard of. It's, I just always had a great deal of respect for her. I just wanted to, just one second.
And the way it came up was Mr. Glass had mentioned it last meeting, and we said, give us just a little bit of time to draft it, and let our family know, and we'll do it in April. And so, it was good to write that up.
Well, Mr. Charlie, I know she probably came home sometime and told you that her and I went ahead and did. I always respected her. I think of all the superintendents we've had, she was the smartest one. She had the capabilities of doing pretty much anything that needed to be done. She cared about the school system. She always wanted us to succeed. And when we did go head-to-head, it was basically based on respect, differences of opinion, but at the end of the day, I had a lot of respect for her. I'm sad that, you know, we're dealing with it in this particular way, but if there's anybody that deserves any recognition for Caldwell Parish, it's her from an educational standpoint. So hats off to you guys, and you have nothing to be embarrassed of. She was the gentle person that, if she believed in it, she believed in it. And she did have an edge of stoves. But so did I. So again, I respected her, and this was appropriate for us to do, and I hope that it serves some member that she didn't go away in things because we wanted to.
She's Martha Lu.
Nick, do what?
I did not take a cry. She was like another mother of mine. A lot of the reason I am who I am today, um, so I'm just going to read. She absolutely lived a life of faith. She was steadfast in her dedication to children, her community, her church, and her family. She devoted forty years to our school system. She was a teacher, a supervisor of secondary education, a principal, and a superintendent. What this doesn't list is she was also the dance line sponsor. So, and that's where she and I went head to head a lot, because I was the captain at that time. She was a teacher at Columbia Elementary School, a principal at Kelly Elementary School, a principal at Grayson Elementary School, the secondary supervisor, and ultimately the superintendent. And she loved Caldwell Parish schools, say probably, I'm going to say as equally as I did. After her retirement, she continued to serve. I loved her dearly. I talked her out of retirement. She came back and she substituted an entire year for me at Union Central. So she hired me, and then she retired as a principal. And then I begged her to come back, and she taught when I had to expand. I had a really tough sixth grade group one year, and I talked with your sergeant into letting me have another teacher and bring her back, and he said, if you think you can get her. And I was like, oh, I know, I can get her. And she did, she came back, and she said, only for you. And she, so I got to see a whole different side of her, because I knew the strict Ms. Martha Lu, but when she was there as teacher, and y'all, we had some rounders, she'd bring them to my office, and she would, you know, hold their shoulders like this, and she's saying, look, I don't want you to be too hard on them, but it's time. And I got to see her love and how much she wanted them to do well, but she also really needed some discipline in there. So she must have enjoyed her time, because we did talk her into a couple maternity leaves. After that, she came back, actually for Kim's and Katie's maternity leave later on that time. And just, just amazing. She was a lifetime member of the Methodist Church here, where she was a choir director for more than twenty-five years. She was a director of the Shephus Foundation, the chair of the Historic Preservation, a CASA volunteer, and a member of the community band. And so, it is with honor that we adopt this resolution and put in the official records of the Caldwell Parish School Board. Anytime Kaylee does searches for it, you will, it will absolutely be there, that this resolution was passed recognizing her service. So thank you to Mr. Charlie, her husband, and Ms. Carol, her sister, for being here with us tonight.
Did they well clean that closet? I feel the t-shirt from you guys tonight.
Rhythm loose, yes, rhythm loose. Oh, that's wonderful. That's wonderful. Photo. Come take a picture with us. Me, too. I'm joking.
All right. Next on the agenda, F, we're going to, F shouldn't have been placed on the agenda for tonight, but needs to go before the Policy Committee, before we present it to the board. Is this what we're talking about?
Yes, yes, yes.
So we're going to skip F.
We brought it up to the Finance Committee, but then when it looked at it, it needed a policy, we need to go for a policy.
So you want to have this done by next meeting, right? Yeah. Well, then, you retired, right? And you, Miss Jordan? So just let me know a date, and we'll set up a little bit. What flies better?
Just a moderate, I don't get any good idea. But I will for you.
One time.
Yeah, just say it, Nick, and we'll go with it.
Okay. All right. We'll look at the gap. Okay.
All right, next on the agenda is Financial Update.
Yay. I know this is called a favorite time. Not a lot to do, but I bounce a little. First page, page one of four, I am G. It's the same format as usual. This current year, we're ahead six hundred and thirty-four thousand, and of course, that will change as the year goes by, where we book all the teacher salaries for June, July, August, so it's going to get exciting. Last year, we were at eight ninety-three at this time, so we're two hundred and sixty thousand dollars down from next year. Kind of where we expected, obviously not a great number. And then at the very top, I highlight the CG one, we'll get to that a minute. I know Baron saw it because he emailed me about it. Next page is Sales Tax. Again, we're counting the same numbers. Last year, we were eight fifteen ahead. This year, we're a million twenty-three thousand ahead, and that's because we did pay out of eight hundred fifty dollars stipend for Christmas, made Christmas hunt, which was paid anyway. That's all the results. Lunch, last year, we were ahead a hundred and six thousand. This year, we were ahead eighty-three thousand. A lot of that is food cost, so I mean, I was just handling, not quite, quite yet. Mates Fund, last year, we were ahead two hundred and seven thousand. This year, we're ahead two hundred and sixty-three thousand, so. And that just depends on how James is able to schedule things out, whether we have a new project last year versus a project this year. Not a whole lot to do yet, but I can even notice, it's a good job, James, for it. Not a whole lot to do yet, but I can even notice it's a good job James did. Maybe you need to be put in charge of the general fund. Then the next page, G dash one A.
Wait, wait, wait. Before you move forward. Let me wrap my brain around this. G one, we were, we were ahead this year of where we were last year. Is that what you're saying?
No, no, no.
Okay, go back. Sorry.
Okay. Last year, the bottom line column, we were ahead eight hundred ninety-three thousand.
So we're behind eight hundred.
This year, we're ahead six hundred thirty-four thousand.
And we're ahead this year six hundred thirty-four thousand.
Right. And then whenever we get to June, July, and August, that's gonna be a gigantic negative number year to date.
All right. But at G two, we are ahead or behind comparing at the same time now?
We're ahead of where we were last year.
How much, David?
Two hundred something thousand. Two hundred eight thousand.
And G three?
G three, we're behind twenty-three thousand. Oh, that's the last column has to change. Twenty-three thousand, two hundred and forty.
And maintenance, we were.
We were ahead thirty-six thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars. But there's a lot of risks that are in need to prepare and a ton of other things that James has to break down. So, I mean, there's just never ending on the risks.
So David, does that come out of your phone or through money or?
It comes out of maintenance.
Really?
We're trying to put anything that's not educational over in maintenance theoretically. I mean, it's not part of the banking base in order to maintain our seventy percent.
Looks like pretty close to seven hundred thousand dollars we're ahead at this point than we were last year with these four categories. We've got positive six thirty-four, positive twenty, that's fifty-four. Minus twenty-three is thirty-one and you got back to thirty-six, so we're six seventy-eight.
Well, we're behind six, uh, two hundred fifty-eight thousand on general fund.
Okay, I missed that one.
Okay. Yeah, that's unfortunate. Sales tax, two fifty-eight. And that's the last column, bottom line. And then we're ahead two oh eight on sales tax, down twenty-three thousand on lunch, October sixteen, maintenance.
So at this point, when you compare all of these sheets, we ahead or behind?
Well, they're all individual.
I guess that's, I'm just talking about as a total.
I mean, we're behind. I mean, there's no way we can say calling anything else. So, I mean, there's no way to call us ahead at this point.
And as where we were last year at this point?
Well, just knowing what's coming.
You know what's coming, we know what's coming for the weekend.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we got, like I said, the June, July, and August payrolls are gonna be horrendous on the effect. Last year, we, you know, in April, because I look back, I thought it came in March. Last year, we got the four hundred four thousand on tender money. This year, we're not gonna have that. So April this year versus April last year is gonna really show a size of difference, a size of change.
So we did the right thing without giving eight fifty.
Right. And that was because we had to pay out the state money, state stipend at the same.
And it was a tough choice. What I'm saying is we did the right thing by not, which is what we agreed that if we had the money, you know, we would always consider that. But we may not be able to do it, you know, in the near future. But I mean, we still consider all of those things.
Very much so.
Oh, let's see. Then the Fund Page was G dash one A. All right. I'm gonna try to explain this kind of briefly. The first yellow line item you have is twelve million, thirty thousand, seven hundred seventy more dollars. That's how much we're gonna get on MFP. Originally, I budgeted for this year that we would get eleven thousand, eleven million, nine hundred eighty thousand dollars. So that's a favorable change that we're gonna get a hundred fifty thousand dollars. I was more aggressive on that part. Last year, we got twelve thousand, twelve million, three hundred eleven dollars. So we have a three hundred thirty-one thousand dollar decrease in total MFP for twenty-two years. That's how much it will be. And if we had another year like that, that's also another three hundred thirty-one thousand dollars. The net, under the next blue line, High Cost Services. That one I got hammered on. The MFP letter, which came out sometime in March, I don't know the exact date. It has a hundred thirty-one thousand dollars. Our budget was three hundred seventy thousand dollars. Last year, when we were doing this, we submitted a request, I don't know the exact number, but around a hundred thirty, hundred forty thousand dollars. We got substantially a hundred percent of it. This year, and it's a pool of money that all school boards have access to. And apparently more school boards, well, definitely more school boards jumped into that pool this year because it's been more advertised. And because of that, we got reimbursed about sixty percent of what we were expecting. We were expecting three hundred seventy thousand dollars. We got sixty percent of it.
So they give you no warning that it's gonna be less than what you budgeted for?
It's a wild guess every year on how much it will come.
So you're taking a risk regardless of what you budgeted?
Yeah.
Well, and the same thing happened with all of our super efforts. Like you write for, and generally, we've been getting everything we wrote for. And this year, we got significantly less. They cut almost all of our redesign money. They cut all of our CLSD in one pot. And fortunately, we wrote another grant, about eight of us wrote another grant. And ninety-six districts, or there were ninety-six applications. They approved twenty-seven and we were one of them. So we did get that money. Thank goodness, we've got excellent grant writers to be able to do that. But I mean, if we had not written that extra grant, we would have almost, we would have zero CLSD money. So all of our super app money, we would have gotten eighty thousand dollars. And we're accustomed to getting about five hundred thousand. So it's, yeah, surprise, no money.
Was that money being there next year? Like, like?
Nikki and I talked about that earlier today. This is the first time I looked at that number because I've been out a little bit. And whenever we're back, I started talking about you here. Oh. Right next to Jane, so I couldn't see.
I was hiding.
There's a blind spot right there. She mentioned that had we known that everyone would hammer us this much, we could have moved more of those students into Medicaid.
And that's when things that, and those of you that were at Finance, even before I had anticipated this, that was something that I had thought we should do now definitely. Because while Medicaid reimbursement fluctuates a little bit, it's usually within five, plus or minus five percentage on the reimbursement, not forty percent like this has been. So that's something that I think was already on our radar to go ahead and do now. I feel like it's gonna have to be a necessity that we, what we make that move to ship those employees to a different fund. Because, yeah, I mean, he told me today, David told me today, that, you know, this competitive grant was sort of, I think, one of the best kept secrets. And he said that on calls now, they're encouraging every single school district to apply to this money. So it's just, it's probably not gonna, the percentage that you're awarded is probably gonna get lower and lower.
So David, if you continue to lose students, this add too, money not distributed here during the school year.
Yeah. Very much so. And which brings us to the red section. You know, assuming we lose another three hundred thousand dollars in student, on MFP, a student.
That's roughly, how many students?
Uh, thirty-four.
Thirty-four?
Thirty-four. So that's February of twenty-four versus February of twenty-five.
Does Gator impact that? So with that in mind, and I'm just asking, because I don't, it seems as if we don't know what to do tomorrow. So how do you work around that? I guess with regards to a projected number, and if you fall less than that, you're okay?
I mean, that's pulling a number out of the sky based on talks with Nikki and.
Well, and the issue with Gator right now is that the legislature has not awarded any money to it. So we don't even know how many they're going to fund. Are they gonna fund all of the people who requested? Or are they gonna fund just the kids who were on vouchers last year? And so there's not been any appropriations. So we won't know until after this summer when they start appropriating all that money.
But if they fund the thirty-four, we know that's a negative.
We know we lost thirty-four.
But now, those thirty-four, some of them were not state.
There's a multitude of reasons. Haley tracks that.
All thirty-four kids didn't leave and go to a private school.
No, I mean, it's a.
Thirty of them could have went to Saul and Midboro and.
It's just a big variety. They go out of parish or they'll move out of, a lot move out of state, which is hard to believe, but they do. But then you have a lot that drop to parochial private and a bunch that go homeschool. I had five students enrolled this week. And there are people that have left and come back because of custody battles and, and, you know, just living back and forth, kind of migrant workers.
And you get no money for those.
We're seeing more and more of homeschool as well. You know, parents that are traveling with maybe a husband that works out of state. Do you see that as well?
So we're just in a time of uncertainty.
Yes. Negative uncertainty. We know it's gonna be bad, but we have no way to speak. Bad, bad, or just?
Which, which kind of gives me the perspective that, you know, based on what we've become at some point, there's a variety of reasons. So we just can't pinpoint this or that. It's a combination. And I would assume, based on that combination, to do what we're trying to do for me, Brandon, is, is gonna be exceptionally hard because you don't really know what, where the impact is coming from, other than a multitude of, you know, agencies or ingredients that's, you know, here. I mean, I don't know what y'all wanna do.
Where, where, that's, wondering is why he said we would sit and meet and talk and we're constantly meeting and who can, who can pick up this position? Who could pick up this position? Could we rebrand this position and pay for it out of a grant? How can we make that movement happen, looking at class sizes? And, you know, one of the things we talked about is we were able to sit down with enrollment numbers and we feel pretty confident we can cut five positions, you know? And so, and that's because of enrollment. If enrollment goes up, then our MFP goes up, we could always pick positions back up.
Yeah. It would be, I would think it would be contingent upon, you know, the future. Because if it changed, you may always go back. But I mean, if it does, you have to do something, you know, in order to, I mean, offset whatever it is that you're dealing with. And I don't, I don't know.
There's a litany of things that we're going over. And don't, don't think we're gonna spring something on y'all the day of the meeting. Hopefully give y'all something at least a week to, two weeks ahead to drop in digest.
Well, Nikki, I think, not meaning to cut you off, Brandon, I think because this affects the parish, that we may have to have, or need to have some type of form where, you know, the public is aware of what we're doing, especially if we're gonna be doing significant.
Doing anything in sacred, that's how I should.
I got a question. I, I respect the committees that we have on everything we do. But a three-day notice on what the committee has decided, other than texting with Randy or texting somebody else on the committee, is it against policy that we have a board meeting that is strictly about, but? And is, and in that board meeting, is it against policy that we decide to go executive session?
Well, executive session.
Because the reason, because the reason I ask that is, because if Johnny Fallon comes up with an idea, she presents it to Randy, and I'm not talking to Johnny, Randy presents it to me, then I have no idea what Johnny's talking about. But if we're all sitting in the same room, you know, I mean, this is getting to the point where once a month and a committee ain't enough.
So that was on air when you said that.
Exactly. That's what I'm talking about.
We're, we're gonna meet every week between now and next week.
She's meeting at twelve o'clock. I can't get there. I don't know who else can be there.
Well, but I think what you're saying is that.
I would, I don't mind giving up two or three times a month in the afternoons if everybody else could to, 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 'cause, I mean, we all pretty understand we in trouble.
What time can you meet here?
Me? Any time after four. And the school board's at four.
A lot of people that you see tonight are at those meetings, not just three people.
Particularly what we've done in the past, Nikki, is when we have situations like this, we had special meetings over the entire board dealing with this. Because three people, and that's why I don't wanna be on there and I'm not coming because it's too much involved. But if you have everybody together, you kind of eliminate, you know, the extra meetings of whatever case may be.
And that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to get some together rather than have, you know, so many ideas crammed, you know, in together and everybody this, everybody's that. Trying to get some together and present, go over all, as many options as we possibly can, and then take two to three packages and present to y'all, present to everybody and let everybody look at it. And then as a board, we're gonna determine now whether we need to call a special meeting, which I'm sure.
That's a mighty task.
We also have a board retreat planned.
Right. And we do have that.
It will be a four-hour meeting that I think that would be a good time for us to try to hash out as many ideas as possible.
So, you know, we're gonna have that. So, yeah, it's a process. And it's just, it's coming to an end. I mean, but it's just a process and that's what it is. It's not something that, anybody's trying to hide anything from anybody. Like I said, everybody, practically everybody in this room is happy.
Well, Brandon, what I'm saying is that me, I wanna make sure everything is on the chopping block. Not some of the stuff, but everything.
Yeah. Everything is possibly camped. It's, is what we're looking at. And it's just a decision. It's not gonna be a pleasant decision probably in a lot of cases. So it's just, but it's something we're gonna have to work out. And we're in the process of doing it. I, I sure do. Good luck. We're working towards it.
It's a mighty task. And I know the people that are there working their tails off to do it. It's just, you know, we're all responsible.
But everybody, you know, is brainstorming. We want everybody to brainstorm. Any ideas, any, any ideas that anybody knows, you know? We're open for, you know, we're open for any suggestions on anything.
And see, what I feel bad is because you got new people that's taking the toughest tasks in the system that's only committed. So you, that's what I'm saying. It's, it's really gonna take time. Again, as a veteran, I don't wanna be on there. Because I mean, somebody's gonna be affected somewhere. You know, so it's probably good that y'all make the recommendation. We can blame on y'all.
You don't have our backs.
I got you. No, but seriously, I mean, you gotta, because it bothers me, Nikki, at night because I've been here long enough to know that somebody is gonna get affected. And my position is that we're not doing this because we want to. We have to do it because we have to survive. And if the ship sink, it's gonna be the seven people that's here fault. Because that's what we're elected to do, set the budget, hire a superintendent. So that's why my concern is really more, you know, what is that we can do? Look at every option. It's no ulterior motive. We just have to do that to, you know, get to where we wanna be. And hopefully, you know, by the grace of God, some things will just happen miraculously that we won't have to do as much as we think we will. But at the end of the day, it's not gonna be easy, you know?
They, they sit back and they say, "When we walk through this, this is what we look at." Well, just as soon as they say they save the flesh money, then you get something coming and takes the fights away. I mean, insurance did last year, you know, just wiped everything that they worked so hard on. They're constantly trying to figure something out. I mean, it's, it's a brainstorm.
But seriously, Brandon, I know it's a tough task, but, you know, hats off to you guys. And hopefully you can come up with something that would be legitimate and lawful enough that we can present and kind of compare with.
We're faced with a, with a major issue and school boards all over the state are being faced with the same issue. But this is what, let's see, I think the third budget that I voted on, this will be the third one. And this, according to what David was speaking on here, last year's budget that we voted on will be the third one in a row that we're over a million dollars over in budgets. And that, that's, for everybody sitting at this table, that, that's, that might be a record.
Well, I think it's a different time.
You've been here long ago. Oh, it's definitely a different time.
And you go back and you look at the property insurance. That alone, Hurricane Laura came and, and started wiping out. When you go from seventy thousand dollars a year for property insurance to six hundred and something thousand dollars a year? And that's just money we're just throwing out there.
Going away.
Yes.
And if you, if you look at our, you look at our, our utility bill, our utility bills are a half a million dollars a year, or right at a half a million dollars a year. And they're going. And they're going to, and they're, and with, with what's going on in this state right now, with what the introduction fixing to have to do, our utility bills are gonna go up even more, yours are gonna go up, mine are gonna go up, and the school systems are gonna go up.
Flower and silver pants.
Everything's going up.
And David, you can also, uh-
And our number of students is going down.
Yes.
And we pay salaries based on the number of students that we have.
Of course, we'll all do it.
If it's Randy, is, is, is it still safe to say that eighty-five percent of our budget is salaries? Is it still safe to say that?
Randy, what percentage of our budget is salaries?
Uh, around eighty-five percent. Salaries a bit.
And benefits cost, right?
Oh, yeah.
There, there's a difference.
So on the fifty thousand dollar person hypothetical?
Oh, I mean, you got twenty-six percent just right off the bat for teachers and educators. That does not count, uh, health benefits. I, I think we generally say thirty, another thirty percent.
When we write grants, we, we say thirty percent, just to be on the fluffy side.
And it's not accurate, so.
Just to make sure we ask for enough money.
I, I wanna know that, Randy, for you and the others involved, that is not fun for me to know. That, that's tough, and I, I respect all the work that's being done.
Well, and hopefully some things will happen in this parish that may be sufficient, you know, maybe so. Uh, hopefully, hopefully things will come to attrition that, that people are working on.
But Randy, it's one thing we know-
No, we can't live without it.
It's one thing we know that if it's any hawk that's looking at financing, it's you. So, so we, we are, we are in, in good order with you being on it.
Popper Randy.
Yeah, popper Randy.
Amy, uh, the next page is a legal page, legal sized page. It's what I used to produce a previous page. That's what we get from the stage, it's called a special letter, and Rebecca, when we were talking about that, I would have-
I said letters have a word.
You know, David? Yeah, there's, there's, I hit the same number of columns that were listed.
You need to blow this up next time.
I, I know.
Even glass, if you can't see.
So the columns I hit, I had zeros to call it.
Say that again, now.
The columns that are, that I hit, that are not shown, have zeros to call it on because we didn't do whatever, uh, or have that item, or whatever it is. There, there's a lot of charter schools around there that get money, a lot of them go on, so what ID students go on to a charter school. So we don't get them. So, that, anyway, that's most of the columns. That's all.
Okay, uh, Nick, when, uh, when, when students drop, do we have, uh, I know the ones I've been involving, we try the best not to, you know, a lot of it drop. Do we have many of that's, you know, kind of trying to drop now, maybe the homeschool, uh?
Not recently, yeah. We've had more add, like me.
At, at your school, same thing?
In our, one count went up, I mean, our February count went up from October, but we compared February to February.
Right.
So, I think we're up. Totally, as I know.
Do, do they really, do they affect us, students leaving? Is it, I mean, do we know the root cause other than just maybe dislike of?
A lot of them come back.
Really?
It's like they aggravated or something, they-
Yeah, because, I mean, I'm just trying to look at the cause and effect, and if it's anything that we may be able to do with people. Because I would much rather, you know, I don't have an issue saying, I would much rather us-
Well, we pour so much of our energy into making our schools the absolute best and trying to be responsive, trying to be, you know, provide the very best education, try to put out as much positive in because we, we want to educate our kids. We want our kids to choose our school. So, I mean, a lot of effort goes into trying to make school the very best for our kids, because we don't.
See, sometimes when I see Facebook posts, it takes all hell in me not to respond, because I know I shouldn't. But sometimes I want to, because the majority of what you're seeing may, may be valid from a perception standpoint, but from a realistic standpoint, because they don't know everything that's involved, because there are levels and layers. Maybe, maybe they need to give us a little bit more freedom to respond, you know. No, seriously, because I, I see a lot of stuff that, you know, just really bothers me, and you and I talk about it sometimes. I don't know if the perception is just there and they don't wanna change it. Uh, some things of that, like I said, I'm not offsetting anybody's position, but I, I've always experienced over the thirty-plus is that when there's an issue, if you took the time to go and talk to the source, when the unfamiliar and familiar become together, then you can have a meaningful relationship or conversation in what you thought may have existed. And, uh, Kim, remember, we did this last year with the, the parent, Maria, and it worked out perfect. So I think, uh, we just have to be willing, Melissa, I think you're probably good at it, to bring, uh, you know, individuals that maybe two bulls on each side, but you gotta bring them together. And everybody gotta understand, at the end of the day, it's all about the kid, not about you, not about you, but what can we do to move this kid forward? Kim, I think we did a successful job with that Maria, and I think it worked out, because I haven't heard any issue from the parent. Uh, I've seen him on multiple occasions, and the last time I talked with him and I asked him, how did it go? He was pretty much okay with the situation, but it took getting everybody to the table. So I think if, if they call board members, urge them to, if you have to go with them, to, uh, you know, go and just sit, you don't have to say anything, but give them a vote of confidence, because they'll learn. So, again-
You mentioned the both then.
Yeah, and, uh, what is that, Clifton Street? That's, that's pretty good. Maria asked me if they say you must learn it from the Clifton Street.
That's coming too, for the retreat.
Can we already move on to, um, to the district leaders update?
Yes, all right, nice and brief, everybody, let's, let's start. Oh, Monica's, yes, go.
Um, okay, Monica is at the Louisiana Head Start Association Board Meeting. Um, she says that online registration has opened this week, and in-person registration slash screening will be the last week of May.
Uh, we're staying the course, school year's winding down on my end. Hopefully twenty-four more days, I think that's what we got calculated, and, uh, we can put it to an end, but then we'll get ready for summer school. Uh, I would do my very best to try to keep those numbers that tape that's said, uh, in the right order, but on that note, uh, over the past few weeks, I've gotten some emails from vendors that we use to buy parts for various things, and they're telling me potentially expect increases in prices, uh, and then also shipping costs, so.
See, that's another thing.
Rebecca?
Uh, I did talk to somebody last week at the state level who's in charge of that transitions grant that we've been able to do all this work at the cafe and everything from, and she assured me that that money was awarded to the state in a lump sum a year and a half ago. And her exact words were, the money's already in Baton Rouge. So I don't anticipate, from what she said, that we will lose those funds. It's, I've been a little bit nervous because it is something that's sort of considered like a discretionary type grant, but, um, apparently the Fed's raised a check for that a year and a half ago. So that money should be, um, secure, and actually it looks like we are gonna have a couple opportunities to get even more. So we've been working on some ways to be creative with some of that. Um, but it's the only money bright spot I think we've got right now.
Mike?
Uh, we were able this week to finish up the cafe with all the network stuff. Uh, we kind of had patched it to where they would have internet there, now they have all their equipment, everything's dropped in. And now we're looking at, uh, making it functional with the cash register machines and having all that on the network and everything.
So Rebecca, would they be taught to use as much as their ability of?
So we, and the system, since he got the wire dropped, the system came in this week too, so we've got, um, and all- um, all of our, um, therapists helped sort of pick out a, a POS system that is very friendly with, um, pictures. And so we're really hopeful that all of our kids are gonna be able to learn, using even that, that piece of equipment there. And the, um, and actually, we got it for, at cost, because the rep that we just happened to talk to had, um, a mom that was a special ed teacher, and he weighed all the fees that the company typically charges. So, we, um, we got a great deal on that too. Ms. Piercey, um, arranged all that, she's doing a great job.
I wanna say the lemon paha that we ate that day.
The lemon paha?
It was awesome.
The lemon paha was made by the fact guys, is that right?
Yeah. Miss Wee, I think, I mean, F A J.
Ms. Piercey, teachers are nice.
And those girls did an awesome job on the lemon paha.
Thank you. I liked the strawberry myself, but, uh-
I broke one over. Maria?
We're in the middle of devil's testing, so we're right now doing that. So we're working at Columbia right now, then we'll be at, um, Columbia Grace next week, so we're finishing that up.
Ms. Wild?
I submitted paperwork to work with permission to, um, continue the JAG program at the junior high and high school. So, uh, intent has been sent in, and so far we haven't had any cuts yet. And I don't foresee any, because I hadn't heard of any, so we look forward for that, for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And, and at the junior high, they're doing a fantastic job, both of the specialists on it, especially Justin. He's been there for a while, and he does, he's a real go-getter. Wonderful job, he got recognized for having all his paperwork in correctly for the month of March. They commended him, and they commended different ones throughout the state, and they sent that to us, and I sent it on to the principal, so. Our JAG program has gone very good, and we look forward to continuing, uh, this new school year.
I was at the junior high today, and Brent had his kids putting together all the testing snacks and stuff, so they're doing their work, you know, putting all the things together, that was good.
Then we'll get a high school page and see how they clean the campus.
Oh, hi, yes.
The lander box is broken out, and they take a pull-in with me.
Oh, wonderful, I will, definitely. Thank you for sharing that, yes.
Um, I just have to commend these ladies, uh, sitting here with me, since Landon hasn't been here much tonight, but, um, just keeping the, I mean, the instruction going, there is no lost time. Every minute, every, every moment, every hour of the day is taken, and their instructional focus has been just impressive this year. And kids are working hard, we've seen a lot of growth. Um, it's just very rewarding as being a part of the testing team to see the growth. But we're seeing these kids, and that's why we do what we do. Um, our art show is Saturday, um, the district art show from nine to four. I mean, the show is gonna be through the month of April, uh, the display, but come see us Saturday, or have the spring-
Conjunction, which is pretty market now too.
Yeah, it's pretty market.
And with several student groups who are gonna have booths out in spring March as well, yes.
Yeah, so our, our teachers, this is their, this is their show, and, uh, they're super excited, and we're excited to see, the student work is awesome, so I always wanna buy something at my camp, because it's basically, it's- it's, it's great, so come out and see that.
Um, testing, uh, high school started this week, and, um, certification testings for all of our bookstore classes are going, and then junior high and the elementary will start in a minute.
First of all, do you have anything you wanna say, or?
Uh, our robotics team is featured on K N O E tonight. Um, and I wanna thank Callahan Bank and Citizens Bank, the holding company, uh, funded, um, our robotics team with their registration fee, and, and Farm Europe, yes, as well, um, funded their hotel rooms, their meals, and their registration fee. So thank y'all very much. We found out today, so thank y'all.
So we're done with the report.
All right. Uh, Kaylee's gonna send you out on this of your May events.
It's a lot.
It's a lot, yes. But, um, do you wanna remind you, we have the board retreat scheduled for April the twenty-sixth, from eight to twelve o'clock? But I do wanna let you know that if the baseball team makes it to the second round of playoffs, we'll probably have to move that. Yeah, because it, I, I figure at least we'll have a first round home, so the second round will be away, so it is prompt.
It is prompt, that's it.
I know, so we may need to, um, I'll get with y'all about it, we need to set, set it for another Saturday, so, um.
Allison?
I'll, I'll be able to say, trust me.
Oh, okay, four twenty-six, okay, so that's not gonna work.
No changes, no changes just for one person.
If you're talking about that budget, you need to be there.
Yeah.
Yes, we, we didn't make it on a day when everybody can be there, yeah. We were just looking at a Saturday morning, trying to, so we, nobody had to miss work, we had, you know, plenty of time to sit down and do. Um, I am working with, um, LSU Leadership Development Institute to come in and do those Clifton strings with us as well, so that we have that part too, so we can check them. We just gotta, we just gotta before the board meeting, yeah. Okay, one, two, okay, can someone introduce her? They are, they are. So, is she- Oh, here she comes.
I was talking with my son, he's, um, I'm on, uh, in D C time, it's eight o'clock, and it's his bedtime, and you- I didn't, I, I was at Mr. Randy's last night, um, eating his very delicious, um, crawfish, a two K, and, and he did a chance to egg. They called, I missed the call, so.
Did you doctor him?
I did, I'm not hugging on the phone, and, yeah, it was happy.
Oh, sorry, sorry, y'all. So this is Allison Klein, and she's with Education Week, and so she's here covering, and I'm gonna let her talk a little bit.
Yes, hi, right, for those of you, I think I've met almost everyone in this room, um, and probably, uh, asked almost everyone to talk to me, um, hopefully not too much against your will. Um, my name's Allison, I'm, I'm from Education Week, I'm actually friends with Nicole Rents, um, Mr. Randy's daughter. Um, and so you can blame her for, um, blaming me on all of you. So, uh, so the genesis of the story is that, um, back in D C, there were two elementary schools that were, wanted to do, the, the district wanted to do what you all did, right? One was, um, one is largely white, very, very, very affluent. Um, and the other is about, I wanna say sixty or seventy percent poverty. Um, and, uh, you know, and by poverty, I mean like kids on tan, you know, uh, sisters and homeless. Um, eighty percent black, and, um, very low test scores, right? And the other one is extremely high performance. These two schools are three blocks apart in Washington, D.C., right? And they wanted to merge the two schools, um, exactly the way that you have, right, dance? Uh, I think one would do pre-K through two, and the other would have done three through, three through five. Uh, don't quote me on that, um, not that I would be a rank story, it's just my own. But, uh, so, um, Nicole's kids actually go to one of those, the, the, um, more affluent elementary school. And, um, she was for this merger, um, but many of her neighbors were not, and, um, before we recorded, I should remember.
Okay, so, okay.
Uh, so, uh, I thought it was really interesting that you all, she was saying, you know, they're upset about blocking three blocks. You know, my parish, where people went a lot further than that, did this. And so I was, I wanted to know how you guys managed to pull this off, essentially. And I feel like it's a leadership story, and it's a, um, it's a community story, um, and it's a problem-solving story. And I've gotten to talk to each of you, um, about your, your piece of that, so, um, I think it's, it's been really fascinating to be down here. Um, you all are the stars of the story, I don't know how much D C will end up, um, letting into it, we'll see. Um, but I just wanna thank you all so much for, um, for making time for me and hosting me, and, um, I hope you don't hate me, I have a good story. I, I try, as I told Nikki, I try to, I try not to, um, you know, I, I, I try to be fair and, um, and not to get anyone into trouble. Now you'll be on TV.
That's it, that's all, yeah.
Do I have a question to the jury?